All right, good evening, folks. And why don't we get started? Sorry, I'm a minute or two tardy. I went out to get in my truck and I remembered I had a load of lumber I forgot I was unloading earlier in the day, so there I am hauling lumber out of the back of my truck as fast as I could. So, anyway, all right. Deborah, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Present.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. That's the month of April. It's a proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Deborah, if you'd read into the record.
Certainly, Vice Mayor. Whereas Florida's bright future depends on the healthy development and well-being of its children, whereas adverse childhood experiences, including the abuse and neglect of children, can have severe and long-lasting consequences for children, families, and society as a whole. Whereas every child has the right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood where they are supported in achieving their educational and developmental milestones. Whereas research demonstrates that parents and caregivers who have a strong support systems and access to resources are more resilient and better equipped to provide safe and nurturing environments for their children. Whereas it is essential for individual schools, community organizations, and local governments to prioritize children and take action to support their physical, social, emotional, and educational development. And whereas the Children's Services Council of Broward County is committed to supporting families by funding family support programs designed to reduce the incidence and impact of child abuse, neglect, and trauma. These programs stabilize families in crisis, promote positive parenting strategies, prevent out-of-home placements, and reduce involvement in the dependency system. Whereas Broward Aware, a countywide campaign led by the Children's Services Council and its partners, aims to raise awareness of child abuse prevention by promoting healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and in community engagement. And whereas, Child Abuse Prevention Month provides an important opportunity to encourage all Floridians to participate in activities that strengthen families and communities, creating environments where children can thrive. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourage all residents to join in efforts to support the well-being of children and families.
Thank you, Deborah. Usually, there's a representative from whichever organization we're recognizing available, but the person from CSC Broward is, I believe, sick tonight, so unable to attend. I was also handed something that Item 12. Item 12 on the agenda is the discussion on rural ranches slash A zoning category has been withdrawn from the agenda, so if you're here on that particular agenda item, it won't be discussed this evening. If you're watching on YouTube for that as well, we'll... I'm not sure if it is pulled permanently or be pushed to a future agenda, but I wanted to let everybody know. All righty, the next item on the agenda is the town council's acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report for last year. There's a presentation from our auditing company, Citri... Oh, boy. Citry...
Cooperman.
Say again?
Citron Cooperman.
Thank you. Cooperman piece I can read, but I'm having trouble with the first name. In any case, let me turn it over to Emile.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and the public. We are extremely glad and happy to present to the council for acceptance of the fiscal year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which is the acronym ACFR. This conclude a successful audit in which the town continued to strengthen his financial This, we have been able to accomplish this thanks to the trust and guidance of council, the fiscally prudent administration approach of the town administrator, and to the increases in surpluses that we experienced during the year. At the same time, we want to commend the Financial Services Department team for their work and time, our Deputy Financial Administrator, Rich Strom, Arianna Derby, the Senior Accountant, and our Procurement Officer, Christina Semerato. It's also important to mention the fact and the work that Citron Cooperman has put into this work, their availability, always available at any time for any questions or any concerns that the town might have during this process. Before passing the presentation today, and I just want to highlight a couple items that I think are important in detail to be provided. The first one is that the on-assign fund balance, which is a savings reserve of the town, actually increased from 6.6 million last year to 8.1. This actually puts the town way above the threshold that was adopted last September when we adopted the fund balance policy. That funds balance policy is going to be applicable into this current year audit, which is the 2020-25. Also, what makes this increase is the increase in act valoring taxes, an increase in charges for services, which totaled about half a million dollars, and also increase in investment revenue of over 526,000 versus what we had anticipated. That actually reflects that if we were to have meeting that the fund balance policy adopted last September would have required 5.8 versus the 8.1, which is just another factual information to show the fiscally responsible management of council and the administration. The debt actually was reduced by 692,000, that's rounded, and the fiscal year ended debt balance for the town, it now stands at 6.8 million. And something that it could be taking on the side is the fact that the town, this is the first year that the town experienced or were required to have a single audit. That means that the town spent 750,000 or more on grant-related funds, which is great news, although it's been perceived as a single audit not being one. This is a good thing for the town. That means that the town was able to obtain grant and expend it at this rate that actually surpassed that 750. Just as an FYI, that we do foresee next year also to experience a single audit at the federal level, given the fact that we have a substantial amount of funds from ARPA to be allocated on this year. And with that, I hope I did not steal the thunder to Citron Cooperman team, but I want just to introduce Stephen Emery. He's the partner. Michael Barnett is also here. He's the manager.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and you did steal some of my thunder, Emile, but I've got a few things to share that you did not. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Stephen Emery. I'm the partner on the account, and we very much so appreciate the ability to do business with the town, and we very much so appreciate the opportunity. So, within these financial statements for the year ended September 30, 2024, we have three separate reports that I'd like to go over with you all. So, the first one is the independent auditor's report. So, what that report states is that after conducting our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we are not aware of any material in the statements within these financial statements. The next report, so that would be known as a clean report. Now, the next report is the Government Auditing Standards Report that was referenced in the independent auditor's report. So, anytime we're going to be doing an audit of a municipality or certain nonprofit organizations that receive federal or state funding, you're required to have that type of an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. The main differentiating factor between that type of an audit and a traditional type of an audit for a for-profit type of entity is that if we were to encounter any internal control deficiencies or any noncompliance with grant agreements, rules and regulations or things of that nature, those get reported right in the main report. And the reason for that is these are public funds essentially that are being dealt with. So, that is also a clean report. We don't have any internal control deficiencies or material weaknesses to report, and there was no noncompliance noted as a result of our audit.
Excellent.
And, yeah, which is a very positive thing to be able to be said about your finance department. Now, lastly, Emile touched on it briefly, there's your single audit. So, a single audit is required to be conducted when you receive and expend $750,000 or more of federal or state funds. And as Emile mentioned previously, this is the first single audit that the town has been required to have, and that's a really phenomenal benchmark to meet because now you're getting funds from the state and the federal government instead of relying on the local citizens of the town. So, this is, when that occurs, there is some additional audit work that goes into that because the state or the federal government, they want to ensure that those funds were properly spent in accordance with those agreements. So, that's the purpose for this third report. So, we focus on a couple of things. We focus on whether or not the funds were expended in accordance with the agreement, and also was there an internal control structure in place to adequately oversee those funds? So, those are two separate things that we were required to audit, and this is yet again a clean report here. So, very positive to note. And we do, even though the town has not had a single audit prior to fiscal year 2024, we do conduct a lot of single audits, so we're very well-versed in the types of compliance requirements that go into that type of an audit. One other thing to note is during 2024, the town was notified that they did receive the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence of Financial Reporting that's awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association, and so the town received that for their 2023 report. So, now we evaluated the 2024 report, and that conforms to all the rules and regulations that the GFOA has, so we are confident that later this year or early 2026, the town's going to be notified that you're yet again going to receive this prestigious award.
Great.
Yeah, and this is all prepared by town personnel, so it's truly a credit to them, to Emile and his team. Now, I'm going to run through a few of the financial highlights. Emile did already touch on many of these, so I'm not going to reiterate too much, but some of the things that we look at, some of the high-level indicators, your fund level financial health, so your reserve fund balance, that does exceed what the GFOA recommends as the minimum required. So, that does indicate a level of financial health that the town has achieved. The next, the debt has been steadily paid down, and all the compliance, there is compliance with all the covenants associated with those debt instruments. Next is the budgetary compliance. So, obviously, a great level of care goes into putting the budget together, and the department heads are held accountable for their budgets, right? So, that's something that we look at, and it's something that is reported within these financial statements. And you all did achieve budget, the town did achieve budgetary compliance for the year ended September 30, 2024. And that's another factor that the Government Finance Officers Association does look at when they go to review this to determine whether or not you're going to be awarded that achievement. Now, just a few additional matters. All the accounting policies that the town uses and has adopted is disclosed in these financial statements. We evaluated those to make sure that they are in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting policies, and also the accounting estimates that go into these financial statements. Essentially, every set of financial statements does have to have estimates associated with it, things like estimated useful life of assets and things of that nature. We evaluate those estimates that management came up with, and we do agree with them that they are reasonable and fair, and they would not mislead the reader of the financial statements. One really important point that I want to touch on is adjusting journal entries. So, a lot of times, financial statements do have a clean opinion, but the auditor has to come in at the end of the year and post a lot of adjustments to the books, which indicates that all throughout the year, maybe the financial reporting wasn't accurate, but when we go to issue our final report at the end of the year, because a lot of adjustments had to be posted, then we can issue a clean opinion. And so, the opinion doesn't differentiate between those two types of entities. For the town, we did not have to post any adjusting journal entries. So, what that means is that all throughout the year, when you're looking at your financial documents from Emile and his team, that those are materially accurate. So, that's, and that's very rare as well.
That's probably the best news of your entire report right there.
It is.
We got it right through the whole year. Kudos, Emile.
Right. And it's very rare.
Yeah.
So, to kind of paint the picture, when I say we have a clean report, most reports that are issued are clean. However, the fact that you didn't have to have any journal entries proposed by us, that is rare. So, that's, you know, you all are certainly doing a good job of that. And then we also had no difficulties in dealing with management. So, anything that we needed to look at, Emile provided that timely, and so that didn't slow down the process at all. So, we're very, you know, feel fortunate to be working with you all. And then on another, on kind of a final note, we are, so if you're looking at the prior year financial statements from 2023, you're going to see a different name on that. It was issued by Keith McCullough, of which I was formerly a partner. Keith McCullough was acquired by Citron Cooperman, and that's why the opinion here says it was provided by Citron Cooperman. So, now it's a new company, although you have the same partner in Michael Barnett, the same manager as in the past. However, we do have a new quality control person that is new to the team that with Citron Cooperman, every single audit that goes out the door has to get looked at by one final level of quality control of an individual that's not associated with the audit. It's a best practice, and it's something that a lot of the larger firms do. And so, whenever that happens, there's always a fear that maybe they'll detect something that wasn't done correctly in the past that now needs to be done correctly in the future. So, the result of that would be typically a prior period adjustment. So, they would look at the balances, and they would say, well, your starting point shouldn't have been here, it should have been there. That did not occur. So, we had a very high-level individual who is on ACFR review committees for the Government Finance Officers Association nationally. So, what that means is he's on a committee that reviews these ACRs all throughout the country that are issued by different municipalities, and he's also the quality control individual at Citron Cooperman. So, he went through all of our procedures, not only for the 2024 audit, but he looked at all of our procedures for the 2023 audit in order to determine if the beginning balances could be relied upon, and they could be. So, none of the manner in which the transactions were previously recorded and accounted for were all determined to be correct both in 2023 and 2024. So, it's a very positive report overall, and at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions that you all may have.
It's hard to ask a question when everything goes right.
Yeah. What can we do better? You know, I've been coming to the council meetings since we formed the town 25 years ago. It'll be 25 years in June. And Nul knows the story because he's been showing up and he's heard the story, but five years into it, our accountants fired us. The administration was so belligerent and noncompliant and not cooperative whatsoever. They wouldn't come back. I mean, we had to find another firm. We've had a lot of progressive good over the years, but I cannot think of a better report than this one. So, thank you, and honestly, congratulations, Emile, and to you and your team, and I know the management team, this is, you lead this, but everybody participates. So, congratulations to everybody on the town staff and as well you for leading it, and Russell, of course, for marshaling the troops and getting everybody in line. Come on, guys, this is enthusiasm out of an accountant.
Yeah.
This is what makes these folks tick, and this is great news. I couldn't have asked for a better report. Thank you.
Well, I'm pleased to be able to deliver that and very pleased to be able to do business with the town.
Yeah. Must be great coming in and auditing a group that everything is done properly.
It is. It's a treat. I don't get that all the time, you know? So, it's, we do very much so value the relationship, and if anything were wrong, I would absolutely let you know. I have to do it with a lot of my clients, and it's something I am comfortable doing, although I don't enjoy doing it, and so I more so get to enjoy being able to provide this kind of a speech to you all.
Great. Great. Any other, any questions, any comments, folks? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, if I may.
Please.
The next item, we were scheduled to have Richard Torniz from Broward County Traffic Engineering here to talk about the Sheridan Street Widening Project. He was invited. I know there were some data he was waiting on from an updated traffic study. I'm not sure what happened, but I don't see him here tonight, so I don't know if he's on his way. Put some messages out to him. Keith sent an email. We'll figure it out if he's not here. We'll figure out when he, you know, what occurred and make sure he comes out to another meeting in the future.
Okay. Sounds good. I mean, that project is moving down the pike, so to speak, so the sooner the better.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, then, let's see, do we have any public comment this evening?
Vice Mayor, we have one. Mary Ann Allen. Oh, we have more than one. They're hidden under my book, but Mary Ann Allen's first.
Hello, Mary Ann. We haven't seen you in a while. Glad you're looking good.
Hey, I'm still alive, and that ain't bad. I had a little back operation a while back. Thank you so much. Mary Ann Allen, Mustang in Napa, Long Term Resident. So, the subject I was going to talk to got shelved, so I'm going to talk about something that affects everyone and a bill that is in the Florida Senate right now by Senator Garcia to ban chem trailing over our skies. Twelve states now have joined the battle to ban the chem trailing going over the skies. So, they took a NOAA flying lab under one of these airplanes, this is a few years ago, to figure out what is being sprayed on us. It's aluminum, strontium, barium, cadmium, graphene. And you wonder why we have epidemic Alzheimer's nowadays. People are complaining of severe respiratory problems after the spraying, and you'll know because you'll see a silver white sky. First, you'll see the little lines go across the sky, then they spread out. They've gotten rather creative, and they make little puffs now along with the chem trails lines. There's little puffs, and then they go and they create what looks like clouds but isn't. So, you have a glaring white sky that dims the sun, so you're not getting the photosynthesis that you need for your plants, you're not getting the sunlight that you need to produce electricity from your solar panels. But the worst of it is that this, these chemicals filter down into our soil, into our water, into our lungs, into the very environment that we have, including the leaves on the trees. Aluminum is a desiccant, and it is highly flammable, so you wonder why some of these fires are burning so strong in the forest or wildfires that they call it. So, it would be helpful to give Senator Garcia a vote of confidence or some support as the bill is progressing through the Florida Senate. Thank God, okay? The other thing is the wildfires that we saw last week in the Miami Dade, close to the Everglades. I'm glad they got a handle on it, but it's something that all our residents are concerned about, and I want to congratulate the town council for the first time that I can remember being a resident here for 30 years. You had the forestry division and the fire chief come and tell us all of the preparedness of this town, what we should do to prepare our properties, take all the dry stuff 30 feet away from your property, and they're well-prepared, which makes me very happy. So, thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Who's next, Keith?
Of course, the Sikh youth, so I apologize for calling you Mary Ann first, but got a big week coming up.
Good evening to the mayor, council members, and town residents. As you know, we are exactly nine days away from hosting our seventh annual Unity Diversity 5K Run/Walk. We have been working diligently with the town of Southwest Ranches to put together another fun-filled day with food, music, and of course, the race. As always, the funds gathered from this 5K will go towards the town of Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund, and so we encourage everyone to invite their friends and family to support this cause. And if you haven't signed up already, please visit swr5k privaveds.com to sign up, and we look forward to seeing everyone there on April 5th for a fun day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
We have John Weiser, followed by Alan Perlman will be the, Alan Perlman does not wish to speak, so just John. Oh, we good on both? Oh, perfect. No further public comment.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Board reports? Any board reports? Thank you for contributing to an early meeting. Let's see, council member comments. Gary, would you like to go first?
Wouldn't want to have it any other way. Just a few brief announcements, then I have a comment at the end. First off, I want to thank the Southwest Ranches Women's Group for the memorial that we had last night for Debbie Goff Rose. It was quite moving. It was very well put together, very well done, and quite humbling. I've known Debbie for 30-some-odd years, and we had a fantastic finish to the whole thing, which surprised a lot of people, but it was Debbie's final wishes. And I just want to say, it was a great job by all the volunteers. It really was. It was really good, and so I just wanted to mention that. Obviously, we just were talking about the 5K, which is coming up a week from Saturday. If you haven't signed up, please sign up. It's a lot of fun. It's early in the morning, it's over with by 11:00, you're back home, you get to see a lot of people, and it's quite enjoyable. April 12 is our Egg Hunt, Annual Rolling Oaks Egg Hunt, which is open to the town, all the kids. The Easter Bunny's going to be there, starting at 11:00 a.m., and then at 12:00 is when the Egg Fiesta starts with all the different age groups and the kids running to get their eggs. And let's see, what else?
What about the Easter Bunny?
Easter Bunny's going to be there at 11:00. Is the photographer going to be there?
Be there.
All right. Outstanding. And we need a Buddy Wrangler, too.
She'll be there.
Absolutely. Great. Glad to hear it. So, and by the way, Councilman Hartman takes pictures of anybody and everybody who wants to sit with the Easter Bunny, and it's, puts it on the website, and it's all for free. You can download his photos. It's really, thank you, Bob. I mean, it's like, you know, does it, he does it at Christmas, he does it at all the events, Halloween, et cetera, and we can't thank everybody enough to do that because, believe me, if you've never posted 100-and-some-odd or close to 500 pictures at one shot, and then make them available for downloading at no charge, you know, for people to use, it's quite a feat. I mean, it involves several hours of computer time, not counting standing there with the camera, you know, taking pictures, you know, of some guy in a bunny suit.
It's a labor of love.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Easter Bunny.
Let's see, what else? Oh, the BCPA, the Broward County Property Appraiser, is going to be here the first Tuesday of the month, which will be next Tuesday, from 10:00 to 12:00, if you need any help with your property appraiser needs, or if you need any help with ag. They have an ag representative there, too, that can answer all your, answer most of your questions. If they can't answer them, they'll get the answer. DMV Flowmobile is going to be the 23rd of April. If you, last month, this month, we were blocked out, so get in early. See Deborah to make an appointment. She will schedule you in. It's right here in this, in the dais is where they do the service. It's a remarkably great service, and if you need it, use it, okay? We have our 25th birthday celebration, anniversary, whatever you want to call it, on June 7. Were you going to come up and say something about that, Susan? Okay, when?
Councilwoman, she's going to speak under my comments.
Oh, okay. All right. Just wondering, she was sitting there so quietly. So, all right, I won't get into it then. I'll let Susan take care of that. We have Hazmat at the Barn on the May 3, Saturday. Bring all your disposable electronics, tires, whatever you have that you can't figure out what to get rid of. It's beyond normal garbage pickup. That would be the time to bring it. Obviously, not commercial stuff that has to be treated separately. This is strictly for residents. Obviously, not commercial stuff that, that has to be treated separately. This is strictly for residential stuff. Finally, I just want to close with just a general comment on development in our town. We've got some bills going through the Senate and the House right now. It sounds scary on, on the surface when you read them, but most of what's on it does not apply to the town. But there have been reports of developers in our town using that as a scare tactic amongst residents in our town. And I, I think that's really disingenuous, and it, it, it's really disturbing. And they need, the developers need to understand, should they do that, my reaction is going to be extremely negative on something like that. And I just want to put that out there so that they understand that. We have a certain lifestyle that we appear, that we knock ourselves out to maintain. And we will maintain that, and we will not be giving in to scare tactics or false information, stuff like that, because, believe it or not, we've got an outstanding team of legal advice and land, and they get us answers, 1, 2, 3, and they track all this stuff for us on a continuous basis. This is mostly stuff that the general public doesn't, doesn't see, but they work with us, and they get us the answers that we need pretty fast and immediate. And so we're able to stop that. But just as a general reaction, I'm really disappointed at people that, that are doing that, developers that are, that are doing that, to the council and to the residents. So I just wanted to close out with that.
Good. Thank you, Gary. Guys?
Real quick, yeah, last night, I also spoke at Deborah Goff-Rose's memorial. Great person. I actually handed her one of my shirts three days before she passed. Met over at Robin Dutzyan's property, went behind the barn, spoke with her, and very, very kind woman. She has been, she was the first person to ask me for a shirt. It was really nice of her. Second, remind folks that we're on the, about two months away from hurricane season. Trim your trees. We've already had one storm in the Atlantic, unnamed, but there's already been one storm out there. So it doesn't look like it's going to be a quiet season. Third, reminding folks about recycling. No pizza boxes, no styrofoam of any kind, no plastic bags. That stuff just doesn't work in the separators over at WM's separation facility for recycling. And then last, within, probably within the last two, two weeks, I've had situations where people have been speeding, and I'm right on Holliday Trail, right? I mean, not even 1,000 feet from my home. One time, it was a white work, work van tried to run me over, because I was trying to get him to slow down. And, and just had one today, a car just speeding and speeding and speeding, didn't even bother slowing down, and I was walking my dogs. So, spoke with Russell about this, and Rod is going to do a presentation next month, at the end of the month, at the Sunshine Ranches HOA meeting, which will be on Zoom, to discuss the issues of speed tables. I, I really wish that the speed signs that we have there are more effective, but the fact that I've had two instances of somebody trying to run me over, just trying to get him to slow down, i- is not something I really particularly enjoy. So it's going to be on Zoom. Everybody's invited to watch, so hope to see folks there. That does it for me.
All right, Jim?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I also would like to say thank you to everybody that was participating in the memorial for Debbie. What an outstanding tribute it was to her, to an outstanding lady. It was just a marvelous event, and I was so glad that I was able to attend. The Easter egg hunt, I'll, real quickly, the Easter Bunny will be there. There'll be 5,000 to 6,000 eggs out in the field. Any eggs that aren't found, I get, because I know where I hide them. So, you know, last year I got three eggs. That's all I got. So the kids did a great job. I also attended, Dee, I want to thank Bob, I went out to the recycling plant for waste management. That is one heck of a facility. If you go there and you listen to what they tell you, there's stuff that we can do to reduce the amount of product that goes into the landfill. And there's proof of it there, in bundles, 2, 3,000 pound bundles of everything, glass, plastic, cloth, paper. I wasn't sure what to do with these papers here, so I talked to Barbara at Waste Management. I take these now, and I put them in a Publix bag, paper bag, and I put them in the recycle bin. All this can go in. I never realized that paper like this could be recycled. So I started that. I know I'm taking Publix bags, but, but for every Publix bag, there's probably 40 pounds of paper like this. You know, naturally, redact your name and stuff, but it's there. The bus stop on Dykes, we're going to put up the guardrail. I don't think we need a pad there. There was talk about a pad, but the guardrail will go up. I know that our town administrator's been talking to some people about maybe putting out the bids for that. So that'll be helpful to the students there. There are six students assigned to that bus stop, two currently ride the bus. There's actually three bus stops on Dykes Road, but the only one that we, that affects Southwest Ranches is the one near on 53rd. The solar speed signs, we have 12 of those. Gary donated his to the other district, so we, I have four in my district. One will be going on Dykes Road. The other three, I have places for two. I'm still looking for a place on 163rd to place it. I don't want to place it in front of somebody's home or between property lines, so I'm out talking to the neighbors if they'll allow me to put one on there. And it will be from south to north. We have one at the north end, cover the south end. So when these go in, north and south ends of 163rd, 164th, 166th, on both ends will be covered, which will be real good for us. We still have the mobile signs, don't we, Tom? So if you want to see that mobile sign in front of your home, he can move it from place to place, call Tom at Town Hall. You know that we have the Safety and Traffic Committee back, and the Safety and Traffic Committee came up with an idea that they'd like to see the Department of Transportation, DOT, enforce the weight limit on all these trucks coming in. A lot of these trucks you see on the weekend. And there's no mechanism from us or Davie to do this. So our town administrator asked, got in touch with the Florida Highway Patrol, spoke to them, and on the 31st of this month, they're coming to town with their scales, and they're not charging us anything. They're going to run this program for a while. If the Davie Police Department wants to be a part of it or learn to do it, then, you know, they'll teach them how. They also come up with an idea of how we could honor the police officers here in Southwest Ranches. They come up with a tremendous plan, and we were honored to be able to attend the 18th Annual Davie Police Award Ceremony. And we had an officer, Jose Nunez, here in Southwest Ranches that we honored as our first Officer of the Year. I had the privilege of handing him his plaque, and I'm sure that maybe, probably in next meeting or meeting after, we can actually invite him, and I think he works nights, so we can give him a half a night off to come in and accept the award. But I was really thrilled that he received that award. If you don't know, he stopped somebody early in the morning hours, making an illegal U-turn. Ran the report, and it came back that he had a warrant. So he called for backup. They arrested the gentleman, I say gentleman, they arrested the crook. 18 kilos of cocaine and fentanyl were in the car, and a weapon with a 30-round clip. Now, you know that 30-round clip is not for self-protection, that's just for mass destruction. So they took him off the street. I understand he pleaded and got 10 years. So he is behind bars, and boy, what a thrill that is for our town. In our town, making a U-turn, so somebody in our town he was going to see. That's kind of scary, all right? And then I want to say thank you to the entire town staff. I want to say thank you to all the department heads. I attended both meetings of the Ranchers Academy, and I learned something. I really and truly learned something. Each department head gave an excellent report on their department, and they'll be doing, I guess, again in the fall. So if you get a chance to come, come and listen, and it's amazing. And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Yeah, just a few, a few thoughts. I wanted to, you know, I was disappointed that I wasn't able to be at Deborah's, you know, memorial the other night, and, but I did want to say just a couple of words, that she's, was an amazing person. Always, always positive, always a smile, always really representative of who we are on the ranches. And I'm just very happy that the women's group could, could do such an amazing job in, in putting this together. And it's just, just a very special event, and, and sorry that I was not able to be there, being out of town, but, you know, I was super glad that this event could be on, and it was such, such, done so very well. I did want to just add my congratulations to Emil and the entire finance team for the job that they have, have done in the past, continue to do. Just couldn't be more proud of the professionalism, the transparency, and the recognition that they're receiving for a job well done. As, as you stated, Vice Mayor, that it hasn't always been that way, and, and that just helps us appreciate all the more the excellent job they're doing, so really appreciate that. And then finally, I will say that, you know, being here, I'm, I'm in Sydney, Australia at the moment, and it's amazing here to look around when we talk about recycling and the circular economy and, and just the seriousness that other parts of the world take this whole zero-waste initiative. And it's very impressive here to see what's going on. It's impressive in the fact that you see all over any, any disposal cans, things like that, they're all well, they all have signage on them that indicate exactly what goes in there, what doesn't go in there. You don't see anything laying around, because people just don't, don't allow the trash there. It's, it's just, it's very obvious that it's a very, it's a no-no to just, you know, be throwing away trash regardless, you know, without regard. And, and so, so I am, I am taking some, some pictures of things, and I'll have a little show and tell when we get back. And, and we've got, you know, we've, we've got a long way to go. I, I think the majority of it is, is education, to be honest with you. We've got a long way to go. However, you go to a place like this and you realize that it absolutely can be done, and, and we're on the right track, and we're moving the right direction. So it was very encouraging, but it also kind of lays out what we need to do. So just wanted to express that, and appreciate always the, the work that the, the council is doing, the staff is doing, while I'm out of town and enjoying time with the family. So that's very much appreciated. I know that the town is in excellent hands on, on both accounts, both from the council and from the staff, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, I just want to say that the mayor needs to do this more often, because that's the clearest I've ever heard him speak, and I sit right next to him.
I'll call it in the future, even when I'm there.
Hey, Steve, you know, if you take enough of those pictures, you might be able to write off your entire trip.
I don't know.
We're working for you. All right, so just, I have a couple of quick comments as well. Regarding the trip to the WM Ruder Facility last week, it's, it's always eye-opening to go there, because you see these trucks just coming in and dumping garbage. There's so much garbage that comes in with it, as opposed to truly recyclable materials, and then, you know, they, I don't want to say they end the, the tour on the outbound side, but you see these multi-ton bales of aluminum cans, of, of steel cans, of paper. It, it's, it's a fascinating process. One part we saw this time that we hadn't been through before, they also do commercial recycling over there. So, you know, if you go to a, when I go over to Costco and I need boxes, there's one of those Family Dollar stores there, they have two dumpsters every week full of cardboard boxes, if you need cardboard boxes for anything. But they go over to the Ruder Plant. That's where they're dumped off. WM does their recycling. And they were telling us how all that brown cardboard for all the, I mean, the boxes are this big, but there's literally thousands of them in a dumpster. They have a customer that takes all the brown cardboard. Then there's another grade of cardboard that's like one up from what you see at, you know, you get from Amazon. It's a heavier grade, more for like shipping commercial equipment, that sort of thing. They have specific customers for that as well. Now, they had one product there, I wanted to, two actually, that I wanted to buy. They do all the recycling of everything that comes off of Norwegian Cruise Line ships. So if they're doing a refurb on the ship, whatever is recyclable from the refurb, they had a whole ship gym's worth of that foamy stuff that you walk on in there, so that if you fall, you don't hurt yourself. I wanted that for my garage in the worst way. And they won't sell it. Oh, we have a customer for that. Then the other thing they had is, when you buy chemicals in, in bulk, like they had sulfuric acid, 25-gallon containers of it there, the empty containers. I could use that for mixing up chemicals at my house and things like that. They won't sell any. They have customers for every piece of the waste stream that comes in. It was pretty impressive, walking through this place and realizing. And then there's that one thing that, you know, they show us, this is what we never want to have in here. People actually throw away propane containers, like you use for your barbecue, like for your soldering iron, all that. None of that, that needs to unfortunately go to the dump. Even though it's made out of steel, it's not recyclable. It says right on them. Spray cans are the same way. You're not supposed to recycle them. They say it right on there. So they, they really showed us the good, the bad, and the ugly is that it's absolutely shocking to see what people put in their recycling. You know, everybody who pays attention, who comes to these meetings, who sees what the stickers that we've been giving out, realize scuba masks are not recyclable. There were scuba masks in the pile. There was hose, like, you know, garden hose in the pile. None of that stuff is really recyclable. It's, it's usually consumer products that go through the household stream, you know, like cans, bottles, plastic bottles, all that sort of thing that they're, they're looking to recycle. But there you go. Debbie Green's holding up the recyclable sticker. Perfect, thank you. I think she carries that in her bag everywhere she goes, and we appreciate that. That, that's the spirit. But it was a great trip. Eight, eight of us showed up for the trip this time. I mean, if we do eight, a couple of times a year, that's that many more residents. Somebody mentioned to me the other day, I think Harold, there's another one coming up shortly. Do you have the date? Both? One, okay. So pay, please pay attention. I'm not sure how we're going to get the word out. I'll, I'll announce it as soon as you guys have it. But either April 23rd or the 30th, there's going to be another trip over there. It's fascinating. You know, my, my wife washes everything out. I realized going over there that you don't even have to wash out peanut butter jars. They recycle them. Yeah, yeah, they, it's, it's fine to just throw them in the, in the recycling bin. So one thing that they did bring up, everybody's hearing how we're putting tariffs on everything in God's creation. One of the things that is going to be tariffed is aluminum. I had no idea that aluminum is nowhere near recycled as much as it can be. So much is, so much aluminum, and I'm talking cans, beer cans, soda cans, aluminum cans that, you know, you get in the kitchen. They're not recycled at nearly the rate as other parts of the country are. So I would encourage everybody, when you finish your beer, throw it in the recycling, a soda can. All that stuff needs to be recycled, because one of the things they mentioned is, whether you want to believe what you want to believe, if, if we throw tariffs on aluminum, the price is going up, which means beer is going to go up, soda that comes in cans, anything that comes in aluminum cans, the price is going to increase. One of the ways to combat that is to put it in the recycling bin, and that'll, that'll help defray the, any increases, any inflation on aluminum prices. So that, that, it was a great trip, and I appreciate the people who came along. Everybody, I think, Everybody, I think, enjoyed it. Um, there's something else that I've been talking to Russell about that is long, long, long overdue. We have roughly, what do we figure, about 50 volunteers on the various advisory boards, give or take? We have a bunch of advisory boards, we rely, you hear us talk about it all the time. Most things that we discuss here as a council that we deliberate on, uh, if it's, if it's a, uh, something related to, as, as Jim has been talking about with public safety, or the comprehensive plan, or, 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 I mean, we, we, uh, the signs you see go up around town are all vetted by the Rural Arts Board. We don't thank those folks enough. We definitely thank them here from the dais. I know everybody on the council and everybody, uh, that's part of the administration that interfaces realizes how valuable and how important. So, and this is something I want to throw out to the council for discussion. I'd like to have a year-end banquet. I've done that with other organizations I've been involved with, where we, we will pick a night, maybe in December or in January, to thank everybody, where each one of the board members and each one of the boards will be recognized for their contribution for the year. When Russell and I talked about it and using the catering companies that we use for various events, we were figuring for the number of people roughly about $1,500. Anybody in favor of that idea? Anybody opposed to it?
I'm good, President.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Jim, you cool with it?
Yeah, I definitely would support that.
All right, good.
Yeah, it's a great way.
All right, Russell, so let's try to arrive at a date, and that way the liaisons could get that out also. We're talking about the end of the year, it's only March, we've got plenty of time to get this planned out, but I wanted to get the idea out and see if we could move forward. Thanks, guys, I appreciate your support on this. And I see board members here, so, I mean, we all realize, we all, I don't know of too many people that have served on the council that weren't part of town boards before they were, you know, on the council, so it's a great place to learn about the town and to get involved and to help us all out. Um, something else I was, and this is kind of a spin-off from the Officer of the Year idea that Davey does, and we're talking about doing an Officer of the Year. You know, it's nice to recognize an Officer of the Year, but we also have a lot of meritorious activity. You know, we have, uh, police officers that jump in canals and save lives. I remember a few years ago, um, there was somebody who went into a canal, they were drowning, and one of the officers jumped in and saved them. You know, that's, that's heroic behavior, that's meritorious. Um, Russell, we all, from time to time, will get letters from residents on, you know, officers that have gone above and beyond. Um, you know, we're, I don't know if we should consider it meritorious if they write the most tickets, but I'm all for that. But, I mean, the serious life-saving and heroic activities, uh, I don't know how often, and that's something that Russell and I talked about, maybe we'll do it by, by feel. Officer of the Year is once a year, but what we were thinking is maybe in conjunction with Officer of the Year, will we want to bring in that officer and recognize them here? Six months from then, we'll also look at all the meritorious behavior from the, the emails or letters we get, that Russell gets, we get them. Also, the chief, you know, residents don't even include us in the loop sometimes, they all go directly to the chief with something that, you know, where, uh, uh, one of the officers in the Davey PD has done something that has really caught their, their attention, something very positive that may have changed their life. So I'd like to recognize them as well. That wouldn't be a dinner, that wouldn't be anything like that, we would bring them here and maybe for the first 10 minutes of, of the council meeting, we recognize them, or, you know, I know Russell's got more experience with this than I do. But I, I think they deserve the recognition and our support as well, because, you know, to save somebody's life and, and that go, you know, unrecognized, to me, is unconscionable on our part. So again, I don't, I'm not sure how you guys feel about the idea of doing it, you know, once or twice a year? Any feedback?
No problem with it.
Oh, it's a good idea.
Good, good.
Yep, no problem with it at all.
All right, good.
Can never say thank you enough.
Precisely, and particularly for this kind of stuff. All right, Russell, so I guess we got a thumbs up on that, too.
Yeah, I would say, if I can just jump in there for a second, you know, we might even want to do, you know, a proclamation for the day of, you know, designate a day to recognize that particular, uh, officer.
Excellent. Good idea. Good. All right, last thing, and I'll be extremely brief since I just went over my 10-minute limit. Um, I was at Red's memorial last night as well, and, oh, I would say probably 100 people showed up for that. And I'll tell you something, I hope I leave the kind of mark that Red leaves. Now, I'm a public official, people know who I am because I've run for office, that's not a reason to show up at a, at somebody's memorial service. Those people, every one of us who were there last night, were there out of love for her. Um, my wife and I were talking about it on the way there and on the way back after hearing everybody's comments, everybody was in tears last night because of the way this one person has touched everybody. She served the town in ways I can't even, you know, count here, other than just serving on boards. She was one of our best ambassadors, and, you know, everybody reflected upon what a loving person she is, how she brought smiles to everybody's faces. You have no idea how many children, and my own included, were touched by her. We used to go visit her critters. I mean, that was a cool thing for my kids to do, and my story about her was just one of about 10 or 12 people that, that were recognizing her, and, and when we were done, Red went out in typical Red style. Her brother was there, Red wanted to be shot off in a rocket or a cannon, so her brother took her ashes and distributed, and his wife as well, his wife passed away last year, uh, their ashes amongst five or six, I wouldn't call them bottle rockets, the kind of rockets you shoot off on 4th of July, and Red went off in a rocket last night, with red glare and all. So it was, uh, quite a night, uh, it made an impression on a lot of people as, as it would with her, and I guess hopefully more than my family show up if, if somebody were ever to do something like that for me. It was, uh, amazing to see all the people that she's touched. That's all I have. Keith, legal?
Sure, for my, uh, son and his friends who are watching tonight for their civics class, I promised to be very brief. Uh, two real quick things, Vice Mayor. Russell and I have been working directly with BBX Capital, who's now named Altman, uh, through their name change, to try to get the CCA property to closing as soon as possible. And we're actually almost there. The two main things that, that stand in our way is, one, a determination from, uh, the Trump Department, uh, on, um, on environmental affairs concerning, uh, the wetland mitigation and whether or not the Army Corps of Engineer has to chime in or not. A recent court, court decision says they don't, uh, so we're trying to use that to our advantage to speed the environmental process along. That's one, and that's on a good track right now. Two is an issue that we were left with, uh, when the neighboring property was developed in Pembroke Pines. They built a road, if you go there, through their industrial site that goes all the way back. Uh, for us to have access, we have two choices. One, to use that road, that should have been a public road, but Pines allowed it to be private, or two, to build a new road directly adjacent to the existing road, so you would have two roadways side by side, which the county is not happy about. To resolve that issue, the only way really to resolve that issue is to be extorted and to pay that, uh, company a huge sum of money to be able to use the road, uh, which resolves the issue and moves on. Essentially, they want approximately, I think it's 2.5 million, uh, for the roadway. What BBX, uh, came back to us and said is, listen, um, we need a little bit of cost-sharing in that without hurting the town, um, you know, we need a million dollars to make the numbers work, but this is what we'll agree to do. The million dollars that we need from the town will deduct from the overall operating expenses of the entire establishment for a five-year period at an, at an 8% interest rate. So by doing that, essentially, while we'll still get a distribution for those five years, because the million comes off the top of the gross revenue from the center, it's reduced slightly, but by doing that, they're able to make the numbers work. Um, they've agreed that that's how they'll resolve the issue, move it to closing, uh, we're waiting for the legal document to come back, but for all intensive purposes, it is fair. You know, because no one anticipated this enormous expense that we're going to have to pay the neighboring developer. In addition to that, they've agreed, um, that the town will give them their final extension, they just want 90 days to finalize everything, uh, with the agreement on that million dollars, that doesn't really impact us. Uh, we can get to closing shortly thereafter and take our 16, 16-8, or whatever the, the final number was, uh, to bring that to closing. And the final thing is, they've agreed, because it was never put on ahead of time, and this leads to a little bit of what, uh, Councilmember Jablonsky said, to put a 75-year covenant, that's what their banks are agreeing to, that no residential will ever be allowed on that property, okay, in favor of the town. Why is that? And that's because, what Councilmember Jablonsky said, there are several bills that directly impact industrial, commercial, agricultural, et cetera, lands and whether or not affordable housing can be built there. So they're going to put a 75-year voluntary restriction on the property, then residential will never be built there, which, quite frankly, it really never would, but at least it would protect the town, uh, in any event. The, the final thing I, I want to mention, because, uh, it was brought up about the bills at issue and the affordable housing elements of these bills, Russell and I got numerous calls today, uh, property appraiser called us, because we had residents calling the property appraiser, claiming that the town was doing something with agricultural properties, and, you know, it, it was like a non-stop day, uh, of telephone calls. To make it clear to anyone listening who is, is confused in any way, there are a lot of bills in the Florida Legislature that could har- harm everyone in the state of Florida, okay, in general. That's what they do every session, the session's no different. There is one bill that's called Senate Bill 1118, that speaks about placing, uh, you know, affordable apartments on properties, in ag properties, in, in House of Worship properties, et cetera. The first line of that bill says, this bill is only for unincorporated areas, okay? It doesn't affect any municipality in the state. And despite the fact that I got about 20 calls today by people saying, what are we doing to stop this bill? We're doing nothing to stop this bill, because it has absolutely nothing to do with the town of Southwest Ranches. So I just want to make that clear. The only other bills that really impact the town a little bit is House Bill 943 and other modifications to the Live Local Act. And just in brief, what does that say? It basically says that if you have property in certain zoning districts that want to be affordable housing, they're allowed to do so at the, uh, most intense zoning category that the municipality has, but they would have to de-restrict it for 50 years to be affordable, and 40% of it has to be rented affordable for that 50-year period. In the town of Southwest Ranches, that would mean that people could put one-acre home lots, build houses on that one-acre home lot, and rent it for about 1,500 to 1,800 a month for 50 years, uh, in order to take advantage of this law. It has zero impact on the town, because financially, no developer could ever do that in this lifetime, build a home and rent it out at affordable prices for 50 years. So as a result, the, the current bills relating to this issue have zero impact on the town, and I just want to make that clear for anyone listening, to hopefully, uh, stop calling the property appraiser and, and, and making it something that it's not, it has nothing to do with us. So other than that, Vice Mayor, I'll turn it over to Russell.
Thank you, Keith.
I have just two brief comments. The first one is, uh, I want to wish a early happy birthday to Danielle Caban in our office. She has a milestone birthday coming up on Monday, I won't say what that milestone is.
29.
I want her to speak to me on Monday, so I'll leave it alone. Uh, and secondly, I do want to invite Susan Cutts up to speak about the developments related to the birthday party, so, Susan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my sincere gratitude to all our sponsors and their kindness and their generosity. Uh, thanks for their support, because we have successfully raised $42,456.50. While we still remain hopeful and continue to seek additional sponsorships to enhance this special celebration of our town's 25th anniversary, I am pleased to also acknowledge a particularly generous sponsorship received yesterday. A heartfelt thank you to this donor for their exceptional contribution. This celebration is a gift to our residents, and I want to emphasize it is a gift, meaning that whatever, whomever comes to the party, there is no charge for anything. Regarding the parade, I'd like to share some details to ensure everything runs smoothly. Our Davey Police Department will be on hand to help with traffic. Additionally, I would like to provide clarification on the timing and the logistics of the parade to ensure a smooth and enjoyable experience for everyone. The lineup will begin at nine o'clock. There's been a little controversy about 10 and the night, it is nine o'clock, so anybody that is entering the parade, they're going to be meeting on Mather's and Southwest 63rd Manor, which is also Appicaata East. Um, the parade will start promptly at 10 o'clock and be on their way to the barn. Each parade participant is responsible to providing a brief announcement to be read by Madison Sullivan upon entering the park. Please assure that your parade entry form is completed in advance, so we can have this and make sure that, uh, Madison has everything that she needs to speak about. Uh, if additional space is needed, please feel free to use the back of the form. Forms are available online and can also be found on the table in the back of the room. And I thank you all for the support and the dedication in making this milestone event a more memorable occasion for this community.
Thank you, Susan.
All right. Thank you, Russell. Thank you, Susan. All right, so we have one resolution this evening. Um, Deborah, would you like to read it into the record?
Certainly, Vice Mayor. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, assigning the town's planning, zoning, and land use services to complete Cities Planning Group from Trans Systems Corporation, doing business as Trans Systems Corporation Consultants, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute an assignment, if necessary, and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
All righty. Any discussion, folks? Russell, do you want to mention what this is?
Well, basically, this is just a formalized agreement with Complete Cities, which is the company that was formed by Jeff Cadem, so unfortunately Jeff planned to be here, but could not be here, he's in New York attending to some family issues, but, uh, this is something that we brought forward to the council, uh, when we knew that, uh, he was going to leave Trans Systems. This is formalizing that agreement. We've already previously approved that assignment.
And, and actually, Vice Mayor, just so everyone, the public in the council knows, when we procured, uh, Trans Systems, if you go back and read that resolution, knowing that Jeff wasn't going to be there long, it says, "or the future company where Jeff goes to." So this is just a belt and suspenders to get it done.
Good, good. Yeah, Jeff Cadem's has been our planner since we formed the town.
Yeah.
I mean, it was Michelle first, but, I mean, he's, he's been doing the work for us for 25 years, so he will be a loss when he retires someday, he's got to get somebody he's training, so, anyway, he'll probably work till he's 90.
Public comment.
Sorry?
Public comment.
Uh, yeah, is there any public comment on this?
Need to vote on the resolution? Vote on the resolution?
Well, thank you for the help. Any public comment?
Oh.
I guess no public comment. All right, so let's vote on the resolution. This is great, we, we actually manage as a, as a group here. I'm just the one whose mouth is moving.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
All righty, um...
Vice Mayor, just one thing real quick Russell mentioned to me, we just want to confirm for the record that no one has the issue with the Altman group for him to sign that extension and get this to close.
No. Uh, any, any comments on it, guys?
No.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to one of the more important tasks that we do at every single meeting, approval of the minutes.
Motion approved.
Go ahead.
Don't step on each other, guys.
I'll second.
I was going to motion for both of them.
All right, any council comment?
No.
Any public comment on the minutes? All right, Deborah, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you for coming out tonight, folks.
Outstanding. Motion to adjourn. Have a good time, Steve.
Take care.
All right, Steve, enjoy.
All righty, thanks.